And this is the city, uh, Minutrista's work session of April seventh, twenty twenty five. Uh, this evening present are myself, um, the mayor, Lee Swilliam, and council members present are Kathy Webkin, Peter Bakery, Bonnie Lacy, and Brian Dummer. And then staff present, we have our city engineer, Allison Bunksky, public works director, uh, Gary Peters, uh, city, uh, assistant administrator, Harry Palmon, Jasper Kugel is our administrator, Brian Cover, our finance director, and then sitting in for our place of, uh, chief this evening is Jay Brown.
Josh.
Josh.
Josh. Oscar Brown, thank you very much.
Jay Brown.
Um, we have two items on our agenda for discussion, uh, for our work session. We have the Woodland Cove crosswalk discussion, and then we're gonna also talk about water rate discussions. Uh, just kind of for your information, our, um, work session is, it's an open public meeting. Thank you for coming. You are welcome to listen in. I'm not taking comments this evening from the public. We have your emails. We have your, um, uh, discussion items are presented before to the council. So we're well aware of, of all of that. We've read those emails. We've heard your comments and taken those, um, um, not lightly. So with that, I'm gonna start out and hopefully make this a rather quick, brief discussion. Uh, I would like to see us install, um, at least one crosswalk by the, um, Fox, Foxglove, um, by the Fox, um, hold on, just a second, I'm getting there, getting there. Foxglove Drive intersection. And I looked at this, I actually went on there today, I took a look at it. Uh, I even talked briefly with our new chief of police, Craig Squires, and our new deputy chief, um, Duncan Cummings. And just briefly at our work at the retirement event, and their comment was, well, what is the bad, uh, what is the downside to this? And they couldn't really come up with a downside. Um, so I know we talked about safety issues, and I also had Jasper look up, what is the, um, current state statute regarding crosswalk and pedestrians in streets? And actually, um, if a pedestrian steps into the street and starts to walk, as long as there's ample time for a car to stop, the pedestrian does have the right of way. Um, I think a crosswalk in insignia or striking on the road would just make it a little more visible and a little more, um, alerting drivers as well as pedestrians that this is, um, an area that is safer to cross. And I know we said, well, it's not as safe, but it is as safe. And I haven't had a chance to do any kind of, you know, data searches, but, um, I don't think that anybody would dispute that if there's a crosswalk here and it's used correctly, that it's less safe than not having a crosswalk. I also think, um, it's also good for the city council kind of to, if this is a simple fix, an easy fix, not very expensive, why not do it?
Well, what is it?
That would be the question.
When is it fixing? I mean, I've taken it almost every day since March when this first came out. I have never seen an issue with someone not being able to cross or with a huge influx of cars, and I'm not saying it's different, I'm not saying it's not different than August, but what is this fixing? And then what standards are we using to put this in instead of putting in everywhere else residents want one? Because whatever we do here is gonna set a precedent, and we have to be able to duplicate it again.
So the, the issue here is one, what we're fixing is concerns on our residents. That's what we're fixing. Their concern, and they brought their concerns forward, they stated why they're concerned, and in so on. So our, what we're fixing is some concerns and safety issues that they have. That's what we're fixing. The other thing is, in this particular case, and this is why I'm saying Foxglove Drive only, not, um, not the other one that they're requesting, because the other one that they're requesting is in the middle of a lot, basically. But this one is a four-way intersection, and this one is direct access to the park which is just beyond this picture in our package. And so there's, there's a destination, if you will.
But there's a pedestrian trail crossing right down the street.
That's correct. Yep, and but it's not here, so.
I think that, yeah, right, I think that, um, that so many people in the office shows that they were, is really concerned about it. As you say, perception, uh, but then I think we, I mean, they were, um.
Um, my comment would be, I'm not against there being a crosswalk. I think that's, um, wonderful. I think they should have a crosswalk. But the question comes down to who should pay for it? Because, um, and I said to one of the residents, the more people that come and talk to us about it, the more, like, Peter, it's like, we listen to you. Um, but I'm, uh, I'm in a place throughout the month where I see a lot of people in our community, and there's always something somebody wants in their neighborhood. Sure. And on the street I live on, we have a beautiful new tennis court off of County Road forty-four, the G and L Leonard Park, and that's a destination that we go to when we cross forty-four. Um, that's counted, it's a count, yeah. But we have no, yes, we stand there and we wait to cross County Road forty-four to get to a destination. Right. City park. So I'm just trying to be fair, because, you know, I had eleven residents on Lorin Drive saying, we would like the city to come back and build out the staircase that's at the end of Lorin Drive that goes up to Woodland, um, sorry, um.
Maple Crest.
Yes, Maple Crest. And, you know, that, I know, that affects history. And, um, I'm not saying that this, you know, I don't know how many people will be using this every day, but I think we need to think about, there are many, many roads and many projects people in Minutrista would want. So I think we should discuss, maybe we pay to put it in, but they maintain it from then on. And we are never called to maintain it. I don't know, we have to have this discussion. Well, the only issue, um, is that, uh, it's a city road, and then it would actually.
Actually, Foxglove is not on the, um, south side. That's a private road once it gets to the south side.
But the crosswalks are going across the city road, and so, um, it, then you run into issues with, um, it would actually cost us more to work up an agreement and to work, sign into an agreement to maintain a crosswalk than if we could maintain it. Because, but, you know, maybe not even five hundred dollars a year or, or less to maintain it. Um, but I, I understand what you're saying, and I think that each request we can look at individually, and um, that's why I'm saying I don't think we need to do the Crane'sville one, because it's in the middle of the, of the block that's on the southern side, and it's not going to a destination. Plus, if people want to, and I don't even why there's that access there, but anyhow, it is. Um, and those people could actually walk over to Foxglove and then cross to go down to the park. Mm-hmm. So it's a, what's the cost?
About, about something?
Uh, the initial cost, I think Gary got some numbers recently last week, end of last week, about a thousand dollars per crosswalk. And that's mostly the setup cost to get it all lined up and stenciled, and then moving forward, it'd be about five hundred bucks for the intersection each year.
It would even, yes. I mean, it would be a nominal cost, and like I said, um, well, a lot of people want.
Well, what, okay, one. We have to set a precedent of what we're gonna give. So if forty people come in and say they want something, we're going to put a crosswalk everywhere they want one?
Not necessarily.
Well, then why?
Because this is the, this is the, I'm gonna ask you to please be quiet, because we're having a discussion and it's interrupting. Um, so one of the things is, this is Woodland Cove, so it's the major, major street in Woodland Cove. If somebody came and said they want a crosswalk, let's say, across, um, some other side street, I think we could say no, because it's not the major thoroughfare. This is the major thoroughfare through Woodland Cove.
And there's another striped crosswalk.
Right.
The block down.
I understand that.
So to your point of the people on Crane'sville can just walk down to Foxglove to cross, why can't the people on Foxglove walk down to the trail crossing?
Because then the people from Crane'sville would have to walk, they have, yeah, they'd have to go even further. So it's just another, another opportunity for people to get to that part. When they were developing this community, did somebody, uh, who plans this? Uh, did, didn't they come up and, someone must have decided that they did not need.
Sure, I can jump in. Um, thank you for your question. I wasn't involved with the, the initial review of this, but, um, typically when you have a development come in and the, the developer installs sidewalks, um, we don't usually have, uh, side crosswalks placed on these roadways. Um, we usually call those conversations when you're looking at more of a collection road. Um, so that's why there's no sidewalk, pardon me, crosswalks, um, straight through these areas.
I think this is gonna get bigger too, as they build out the rest of Woodland Cove, because it's gonna be the main thoroughfare to get out of Woodland Cove into the grocery stores or something. So it's, it is gonna be, um, well, it's called the Boulevard, and I think for good reason, because it is gonna be the main road out there. And there'll be more and more, uh, houses, so.
Uh, I've gone back and forth on this, because I'm one here that I want this crosswalks to be a virtue signaling, virtue signaling exercise, um, where we just put a whole crosswalks in to show we care. However, I was looking at the state guidelines for it, and honestly, I don't think that they apply to, uh, certain city layers. Um, so really, I'm, I think I'm in for it, but what I'd like to be is a learning opportunity. So I would like the, I don't know, you know, I rest folks that grow in, and I would like some feedback maybe three months from now, so that we have an extra quest, we can go into it with a little more data that is, um, Minutrista-centric and not just.
Right, that's a good point. Yeah, right. You're correct. You now have various standards, but I don't think they always apply to sticky streets or to our community in particular. But as we know, because a lot of times their standards are so egregious, we can't, and can't meet those standards, but, um, so here's what, what I'm, I'm gonna suggest we do. We don't need to bring this back to regular council meeting because of the cost to install it. I would just say, if we're, if we have a majority, um, to give staff direction that we're okay to have a crosswalk installed at Foxglove, is that? I know, I just want to ask one more. Okay, sure. Um, yes, it is a city road, but we can't ask that land development association to pay for it. We can allow it, and then let them pay for it, we catch it up. We could, but like I said, by the time, so what you would have to do is you have to enter into a, an agreement. It's a lawyer to write that kind of. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, you're a lawyer. What? By the time you, by the time you do that, and then here's the other issue. Then, not only by the time you do that, and then they have to, um, sign lien waivers, and they have to, um, there's all kinds of other issues surrounding that, but then the other thing is, then we would have to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. So, and then do they do it, or do we do it, and then bill them? So those are the questions that we have to figure out. So for five hundred dollars a year, is it worth it? I mean, that's the one, that's my, my question. Right. I understand where you're coming from. Well, I like what Brian says about watching this and see, you know, if we make everyone in the community happy, it's a wonderful thing, we feel safer, it works great. Um.
I have a question. Foxglove on the south side is a private road. Do we strike private roads?
We don't, we don't.
What's that?
Foxglove on the south side is a private road.
Correct.
So we're gonna put the crosswalks on the private road?
It's gonna be a, so it's just going to take a cross, it's not, it's not a four-way crosswalk, it's just a crosswalk.
Yeah, if I may, I'm, I'm looking at the map right now, and sometimes these lines aren't exact, but the pedestrian ramps look to be entirely in the right of way of Woodland Cove, um, Boulevard. So if, if we would do four, they would all be in the right of way, not on the private side. So, yeah, so, but I guess my point is all four of the head ramps are within the right of way.
So are we doing one, are we doing two, one, four, how many, how many brackets are we putting? Just one on the, one intersection, one on both sides? How many are we putting up?
But that is totally up to the, the group as far as discussion go. I think there's been one on the west side that's been discussed, um, north and south.
Would there be any reason why we have to do two?
I'll defer to Gary.
I don't know what, uh, statute is on.
Yeah, but I, I don't know that there's really any guidance that the, the council could draw from. I think if we look at, um, there's where the sidewalk connections are on Foxglove, they are on the west side. So if the council wanted to look at one crosswalk across Woodland Cove Boulevard, that would be a suggestion is to do it on the west side because they have sidewalk.
Right, on both sides, yeah. I think just, I think kind of Brian's point, let's do one, um, monitor it, see how it goes, and, uh, and kind of keep note and from, from that, if you will. But I think one is sufficient.
And then if I may, um, you mentioned something about a thirty-day, three-month follow-up. Um, so three months, is that what I heard? Or was it thirty days?
Three months, we put out, yeah, we had like midsummer, I believe.
Like a July, maybe check-in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I'm assuming too that there would be signs posted prior to those, um, pedestrians as well as vehicular trouble, that there's a crosswalk ahead. I mean, is that, that standard, right? Yeah, so I guess that would be an Alison question.
I think with that, it's a prudent thing to do, um, to alert the drivers if there's multiple, uh, crosswalks. So I think sidewalks are, are probably, uh, signs are usually running about three hundred?
Yeah.
When you get the post.
Well, most are maybe five, five hundred.
Okay, so another five hundred for each sign, so that'd be another thousand dollars. So you're like, you know, starting at two thousand dollars, a thousand for the striking. A thousand for the signs.
Are they gonna be laded signs like on Kings Point Road or just regular ones?
Just regular. Okay. Are we in agreement? Because, um, Jasper has the authority to spend up to a certain amount, so we're guessing it's gonna be around, with the signage, around two thousand. So if we're in agreement, we can just give direction for him to do that. Gary?
I just, uh, I'm a lawyer about crosswalks. Sorry, just getting, if I may, please, I feel.
Sure.
Pedestrian, we must not enter a crosswalk if a vehicle is approaching. There is no defined distance that pedestrian must abide by before entering a crosswalk. The consent should prevail. The law states no pedestrian shall suddenly leave a curb or other places of safety and thought or run into a path of vehicle which is close that is, that is impossible for the driver to yield. Crosswalk does not have to be marked to be covered by this law. In an intersection, the crosswalk exists from sidewalk to sidewalk, even if lines are not painted on.
Wow, correct. And the only.
So, I mean, technically, I mean, basically, I was about, Josh, could see somebody, you know, in the crosswalk, so I mean, if you're out, you can give them a ticket, of course, they can, you know, get a G one, eventually. You know, it doesn't have to be more, so I'm just sorting it out. I don't care one way or the other. Let me know what you want us to do. We could add it to the list of the mark.
That's, that's kind of what, yeah, that's kind of what I was saying earlier, that, um, a pedestrian, one in the roadway, and if a vehicle has an opportunity to stop, they have the right of way. The crosswalk, all it does is add an extra visual so that cars are alerted that there's a possible crosswalk and pedestrians ahead. So it just adds a little more safety issue. That's all. So, all right. Um, any other comments, questions? If not, do you have enough direction?
I believe so.
Thank you very much. So now, very important discussion is, not that that wasn't, but this is also very important is our water rate discussion. As you know, we're gonna have a town hall meeting next Monday, and before that meeting, it would be nice to have some things, possibilities, and options for it. So that's, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we want to hear staff's ideas, if you have ideas, um, so that we can present these ideas at the town hall meeting and get some feedback from the residents. So with that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, um, as you can see in the staff report, uh, we're talking about building a plant that's about twenty-two million dollars. Uh, the bond payment for that plant using kind of an estimated four percent interest and a twenty-year bond, uh, period would cost about, cost the city roughly like one point six two million dollars a year in, in a bond payment. So that's essentially what we're talking about, having to make up in our, our current revenue stream for water. Right now, and I'm going off memory, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but we're at about one point seven million in total revenue?
Good year.
For a, for a good year, for a dry year. It's probably like one.
Winter years, probably one point two, one point three.
I mean, so, so it fluctuates quite a bit, so, um, depending on that, that we have to come up with that much money each year. So if we build the plant, we, we have to raise rates significantly. Um, and this is something that can be done over a year or two if we want to. Um, just knowing that your end product will likely be higher if you kind of extend it over a couple of years, but we have to, we have to make up some, um, some revenue. And I guess the goal tonight isn't really to come up with exactly how we want to do it, but to talk about just some options, as the mayor alluded to. A couple of things that we've talked about in the past, um, one of our neighboring communities, Minnetonka Beach. I think they're the only ones that, that I could find that do it this way. They have a separate charge just for, um, water treatment. So they, they, they built recently, I, I think, believe it was around a ten point five million dollar plant. Um, and I haven't been able to confirm this yet, but they currently have a three hundred and thirty-five dollar per quarter charge. Um, and just talking to the mayor in passing a couple of weeks ago, they're actually adding some onto that, that exact amount. I don't know what it is. I believe it was around a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty more dollars per quarter. Um, so they're probably looking at about five.
They only have two hundred residents.
Yeah, so.
Two hundred one or constant, oh, yeah.
They're, they're a little, little bit different, um, than us as far as the ratio goes. The other option is, you know, we have a current kind of conservation, um, rate tier system where we have, um, three different tiers, one that goes from zero to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand to sixty-five thousand, then over sixty-five thousand gallons. Um, the way that we could look at this is, is adjusting those rates upward, um, so that they can accumulate enough revenue to pay that bond payment, along with all the other, um, water-related charges that we have. Um, one thing, if you know, um, if we would go with just using the, um, usage charges, one, one note that A two S, our water engineer group, mentioned was that we should probably evaluate the ratio between each of the tiers. Um, generally, they, they say rule of thumb is like two to one. So let's say our first tier is five dollars, um, our next one should be ten, and the next one should be twenty. Right now, we're a little bit low, probably on the top tier if we follow that rule. So if we would work it into usage, um, we probably look at reevaluating the tiers, which can be, um, if you remember, I know that our staff do from the last time we adjusted the, the tiers, or, you know, can be problematic because people are getting high bills on, on Q three. Um, so those are kind of the two options I think are viable. There is an option to do an assessment. So, um, follow the four twenty-nine process and assess property owners. Um, if, that is problematic, because you're kind of locking in the cost of this plant to the existing user base and not sharing that cost with future users. Um, it's an option I would recommend against it. I just, it's not equitable at all, uh, to be able to, to do that, but it is an option. Um, some communities that are completely built out have done that. I know for, for things like, specifically for wastewater, but you could do it for water as well. But, so I think really what we're looking at doing is, is looking at evaluating are the, um, the, the fee, the single fee for water treatment fee, you call it, or something like that, or adjusting the user rates to generate enough revenue, um, to make our payments.
Well, we have, we have two other buckets though for revenue. We have connection fees, and we have area charges for when a development comes in. So, um, and I think every year we need to be looking at those fees as well, um, to subsidize our infrastructure.
Yes, that is also true, and what you, I know we looked at it last year and made some pretty substantial increases to those. I think, um, as far as a strategy moving forward, we should just look at those, make sure that we don't price ourselves out of, of the development game, and make sure that we're, because we're a growing community, we should probably have some of the higher water access charge and, and, and area charges for water, just to make sure. But we don't get those unless we build houses or land is developed. So there's kind of a double-edged sword. But those are two things that we can and, and likely will adjust and will look at, um, during that process when we set the fee schedule.
And we asked for the money ahead of when we issued the bonds, so let's say we start collecting higher fees now, and we kind of put that aside for the plan.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And a lot of communities choose to do that proactively, where they try to accumulate funds for a big project and then maybe use some cash to buy it down. We're not, I don't think, in that position right now. Um, generally, our water fund has, I think roughly about a million dollar or a little bit more, um, fund balance, so, which is probably something we're, we're gonna have to look at when we start taking on more debt, because we want to make sure if, you know, something happens, we'll be able to pay that. So I don't, we, we don't have a lot of cash, but if we would have been saying, uh, twelve, ten years ago, twenty years ago, and that was the strategy, was to accumulate some more cash beforehand, we could have done that, but, uh.
That was the strategy. The problem is, is this, this project is, it nearly doubled from what we thought it would be, so, um, yeah.
So one of the options too, that maybe came up, was to make a mid-year adjustment for rates. Um, that's something that you could consider. It would almost be cleaner to do it at the beginning of the year, like we, we have done in the past. But if you'd like to try to get ahead of it a little bit more, you could think about that. Um, it's probably.
We'd want to do it until like Q four or something, because.
Well, I mean, what option we do, if we do the fee, we could just start feeding one or four. The issue is if we just raise the rates, if it's a really wet summer, we're not gonna pay that money to the bond payment. So, I mean, also we want the base rate ridiculously high, so I'm not, yeah, I would be proponent of doing the water treatment fee, just so residents have a way to know, and then it's more people who are in the water system, we can, they can also start paying the fee immediately, and it's not fine to the water users personally, just up there using the water.
Yeah, and I, I think we'll be able to dive into all the different options. I think we're, we're looking forward to tonight. It's just, what, what do we feel comfortable as a group throwing out there to the town hall? We'll do a deep dive into this, don't worry. Um, especially if we get to the point where we bid and award the contract, like, we're gonna have to figure this out um, during the budget process. But really, I mean, if there's other ideas, you can blend the two ideas too. You could have half of the, you know, call it the base rate. You could, you could, you could throw some more at the base rate, and then you wouldn't have to raise rates as much. Then you get like, like, uh, council member Refkin is saying, guaranteed revenue. I think that's the risk of putting it all into, um, the usage fees. If we have a wet summer, you know, our revenues go down by twenty percent, potentially, maybe more. Uh, but if we have a dry summer, it goes up, you know, they go up. So it ebbs and flows based on that weather pattern.
Do we have any, I was just looking at the bar tiers, cities around us, and most of them are bottom tier, about a third of what our bottom tier is, is.
To usage or price?
Bottom for price. So like, most of them are around eight thousand, eight, nine thousand gallons, um, for the bottom tier. It just feels like that might run the base a little bit more, kind of trying to count everything on those top water users. People pay for it.
Well, it's quarterly or monthly, because ours are quarterly.
Actually.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a good suggestion. I mean, but some, some cities do, do like, you know, four or five tiers, you know, and, and try to, to get a little more at those lower levels. And, well, and really, you should only have to use, I mean, our bill at our house is four thousand a month, usually twelve thousand a quarter. I mean, our zero to twenty-five is probably a little, you know, high, where we, if we'd want to do like, as, you know, whether you do quarterly or monthly, however you slice it, if you do a zero to twelve is the first tier, and then you do twelve to twenty-five, and twenty-five to fifty, fifty to seventy-five, or sixty, but whatever, you know, something that, and that would guarantee a little more revenue by, you know, and I think even the DNR and stuff in the past has said, you know, our tiers are definitely not the most restrictive by any means. I mean, we used to have really unrestricted tiers. I mean, I think the mayor can remember and stuff, and.
We were.
We, we didn't have tiers, and when we did, we had really loose tiers, and then, yeah. So there is, I mean, you know, whether, you know, three is the right way to split it, we could do four or five tiers, and that would, you know, guarantee a little more revenue based on not having to hit some of those thresholds. Yeah.
Well, then those people that don't use a lot kind of get, you know, they don't. Yeah, well, then those people that don't use a lot kind of get, you know, they don't have to pay as much either. I think, um, so then the other thing to consider is if you do a, let's call it a treatment plant fee, then as we get more homes online, it would then stand to reason that that fee would go down. So you'll be making that adjustment every year, you know, so, and I was talking with Jasper, you know, we're seeing approximately a four percent growth.
Well, it would be three, it would, it would be a, so, I could recap our, our conversation. For every hundred homes that we would add to the system, it would drop the, that fee at eighty, a hundred and eighty-six dollars a quarter by four percent, is what it would go down. So every hundred homes would make it go down four percent, if that's the number that it's set at, you know. So if it's set at two hundred, it'd be, it'd still be four percent, but, um.
And we can, we can look at it every year, I mean, you'd want to look at it every year to make sure that, um, not only is our, is our debt being covered, but our operational, um, expenses are covered as well. So it may or may not go down, I, I don't want to promise that it's gonna go down, but it would stand to reason that it would. It depends on the bond, yeah, but, I mean.
I wish that would happen. I, I don't envision that happening in many scenarios. I'm more worried about more of a negative revenue stream or fund balance, or what do you want to call it, income statement. And, uh, you know, we're kind of jumping into the more budget discussion, but, you know, if we do change the tiers up, there's gonna be some unknowns on how that'll affect the behavior. So we won't know exactly what the revenue will be, so it'll have to be a moving target. And generally, you try to, at that first year is overestimate a little bit, just to give yourself a little bit of room. And then that second year, third year, then you can make it the adjustments, hopefully. Um, but that's one thing you don't want to do is, is sell yourself short, and then all of a sudden you make these big changes, and then you didn't do enough. And then you're coming back to the public and saying, oh geez, we didn't charge you enough. We need to actually, you know, instead of going up a normal five percent, we need to go up another fifteen the second year. So, um, there's a bunch of different ways to approach, but yeah, really what we're looking at, if there's any other ideas from city council on how to approach this, um, kind of revenue challenge, um, that we're gonna likely see if we build this plant. You know, the, the fee, the single fee or the usage or some blended, um.
So we're talking about, okay, so we're talking about adding a, potentially adding a, um, we'll call it a treatment plant fee, and everybody pays the same, and then, um, and then we're talking about maybe raising the base rate, maybe at least a little, if we'd have to figure out how much that would be. And then we're talking about, um, maybe adjusting the tiers and maybe making some, obviously some adjustments upward for the rates. Or some, or if you did, I guess we'd have to almost, and maybe the public would want to know, well, what does this look like on my bill? You know, what, what, what does, if you adjusted the base rate and adjusted the tiers, how much would you have to adjust to make that up, and what would it cost me? I mean, I think that would be a question that people.
Right, right now, I think, I mean, obviously the biggest thing if we want to be honest and transparent with our residents, what we all want to be is, I mean, right now, someone that's probably paying water, you know, a reasonable user is probably paying a thousand dollars for the year, you know, or whatever, you know, probably, whether it's, you know, eighty bucks a month, two hundred and fifty bucks a quarter, or whatever. But in order to pay for this project moves forward at twenty-two million, if that's the right number, I mean, before we were looking at doing on a fifteen million dollar project, like thirteen to fifteen percent increases for several years.
Yeah.
I mean, now you're, I mean, when Jasper says it's gonna double, if you used to pay a thousand dollars for water, you're now probably gonna be paying in, within three to five years, you're gonna be paying two thousand a year for water.
In three to five, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, to be honest enough with everybody, I guess, or it's, I don't see any way around it. I mean, people's bills that they pay on the year are gonna have to probably double. I mean, how do you split it, or fee, or?
The other option is, uh, you don't build a treatment plant and people have.
Blended water sometimes.
Yeah, water, or higher manganese, and you have to alert them that, you know, there's some health issues. If that's what they, where they want to go.
I also saw that the, uh, commercial rates and the residential rates are the same. Is there enough commercial usage to?
Not, yeah, no, not really. So there's, I mean, the school was our big commercial user, technically. They've since went basically all off, all off of our water and onto their own irrigation system.
For irrigation.
For irrigation, so they, they still have a base amount that they use, but they used to use a lot of water, um, in the summer for irrigation. Um, until we get more commercial that, you know, we can adjust those rates with the, the revenue impacts lower than what our residential is. We were like ninety-three, ninety-four percent residential for our water revenue, or, you know, somewhere north of ninety percent, yeah, so. And one thing I looked into a little bit today, because I think the mayor brought it up, was the, you know, we have one apartment complex, and we went through an exercise last year to figure out how we're gonna charge them, um, and the way it works is they get charged the base fee, but then they get charged the residential rate. So one base fee, residential rates for their whole complex, not the commercial rate, so. And we, I remember doing an analysis, and there was kind of a wash between the two, but that's how we handle apartments. And, you know, their bill is like four, four thousand a month right now.
And then, I also asked Jasper, so it'd be good, let's just say, we have to talk about, is that fair to charge an apartment unit, which is a hundred and forty-eight units, the same as a residential property? And when you think about it, some of the apartments that they have are about the same size as some of the town halls that we have. So then we have to, we'll have to discuss that.
Let's make a commercial fee.
Yeah, we'll have to make some kind of adjustment there, so, um, yeah, we'll have to talk about that as well, if that's the route we want to go.
I like the idea of a spreadsheet. I think we should include, uh, the connection charges, pellet charges, and maybe this apartment, because we can see all of the parts, and whether we want to change this, how it affects those things. That'd be really helpful.
Yeah, I think we talked about, um, doing that for the town hall meeting, so people can actually see how we're paying for everything. Because there are three or four different, well, right now, there's three different buckets, user fees and then, um, development fees and then connection charges.
And, and for, you know, we talked about doing a, maybe eventually, once we figure out what we're gonna do, a calculator or a set of tables that people can kind of match up their twenty-twenty-five usage, and then compare to the twenty-twenty-six, whatever we settle in on, so they can kind of see the difference between the rates, too, so. But yeah, as, as Brian alluded to, um, you know, it's gonna not be a, a good fun conversation. I mean, things are gonna essentially double or need to double, plus, plus all the other additional water stuff that we have going on too, like just ongoing maintenance and, you know, Gary's, Gary and I had a conversation today about required testing, um, that they're really making us ramp up on. And so there's, it's coming in at all angles on this. Some people don't bat an eye at paying two thousand, twenty-five hundred for a year for water, and some people do, you know, or whatever, you know. And some of those people that, you know, if they water their lawn a lot, and they have the reasonable expectations, and if to them it's, but for some people, if they're building one from two thousand for a moderate user, whatever, you know, or it's a five thousand, it might get people attention for the year.
Right, and I agree with that, especially for senior citizens that are on, you know, social security and all of that. I won't mention, right, um, no, I mean, you're, you know, you, if you're taking a, a thousand dollar additional hit, it's, it's big for some people, um, but I think if you can, if we put it into, let's say, a monthly perspective, what does that mean? Ninety dollars basically is, uh, like eighty-five, eighty-eight dollars a month. And I think that comes back to your comment, um, Kathleen, about, um, going to monthly billing. And I was talking to Jasper saying, because of all these other things that we have to add next year, not, not water-wise, but otherwise, maybe we don't want to do it next year, but maybe we do.
What's the, when we implement the rates, I think you'll fear that.
We, we need to start launching the money sooner rather than later. So maybe if, if we zero in and decide on a water treatment plant fee, maybe we do that starting this year, but then maybe we do an increase next year. And then we start doing, um, monthly billing starting Q two of next year, something like that. You know, that might also help stagger things. Because keep in mind, if you add monthly billings, it's gonna add more cost.
Do we offer budget billing where people pay a flat rate throughout the year?
Oh, we don't yet, but that's something we've talked about, um, offering. I think we did a little examination and Vannioner Utility Billing Software is, can do that, um, but we just, we haven't offered it. So, but I think that would be, be something to help normalize the costs over either quarterly or monthly basis. The hard part of it is you always sort of chasing your tail, because you're never totally balancing up. You're always using it based on whatever historical from the past one, two, three years. And some ways it's like, it's already gonna be hard enough to pay for this thing, and then you're, you're delaying revenue potentially, or, but, I don't know. You know, you're just not truing up or whatever right away, so by, I don't.
Yes, or maybe a monthly billing would be better. You, you are a modest, so what, what are yours thoughts, I mean?
I mean, I said before, I think fees is most transparent, and then everyone knows what it's going towards, and then we don't have to rely on the rate usage to make that.
Yeah, I, I, I like the idea, it makes it, you know, broad base, so it's, it spreads out the pain.
Yeah, well, everybody needs the water treatment, um, no matter how much water you use. And I think that's kind of the idea behind it. So, yeah, every, um, and I know Jasper in his, um, in the presentation here, um, was like a hundred and eighty-six dollars for three months, so divided, you know, sixty-two dollars, that's what basically, or, meaning sixty-five dollars.
And, and I'll put a big nuance on that. That's an administrator calculation. We'll have to definitely do a deep dive with, uh, some of the utility billing stuff that kind of, is, especially if we change some of the tiers and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, that's, that's just a quick estimate, if we have to double, or we have to come up with one point six million dollars right away. That's what it would be based on the eleven hundred, or twelve, twenty-two hundred and forty-one, or whatever users.
If we add more tiers, is that just like, you put some software and some will?
Yeah, that's not too bad, yeah. Yeah, if we do do the hundred, or whatever it ends up being, seventy-five, eighty, a hundred dollars a month, uh, fee, the only request I would have is that everyone's, all, the council all the way down through every staff person's on board with it. Gary's willing to take more calls than Jasper, because it, it shouldn't, shouldn't just be Darcy and Renee and Angie now gets hit by it, have to be a total team effort, because I mean, if it's, you know, there's, there's getting slammed on the finance side, and there's getting slammed on the, well, the water quality isn't quite good enough, so it should be a total team effort if everything moves.
There are other communities that are charging about the same as we do, and their water, they can't even drink their water. I think that there's, and, and at the, and this is the other reason we thought the town hall would be good too, is just to let people know what we're doing and why we're doing it. Because, you know, when you see your water rates go up, you're like, what the heck, you know, my? And so when we explain, we're building another treatment plant, and you're gonna continue getting really good quality drinkable water, and because, uh, our manganese is high, you know, you give them all these, all of this information, at least they know what they're paying for. And it's not, well, I still have terrible water. So, I mean, that, and that, if I was a resident of another community with groundwater, and I was being charged more, and I didn't know what their plan was, and I, you know, I didn't know anything, I would be pretty upset. But maybe if we do this explanation, we won't get, um, too hard.
Well, assuming we do a mailer and verify everyone else.
Will exhaust, you know, communication efforts, um, but there will be no doubt that people, some people might miss it, they might not like it, they might not realize it till they get their first bill, you know, that in Q three of twenty-twenty-six, you know, that's when it'll hit, and that's when we'll get all the calls, so.
Yeah, my question about manganese, um, I was told that, the powers that be changed the level of manganese from one level that's acceptable to a lower level.
Correct.
So, could it be that manganese is really not a big deal? They just want to force us to?
No.
I mean, I grew up drinking that water, granted, it's a much worse now, I think, I've seen pictures all over the internet. Local, not, not just our neighborhood. You can't really see manganese, no, but I'm saying, our water looks clean, and it looks like gray. I, I just wonder, is it really in fact, because I don't want fluoride in my water, that's a thing now. But so manganese, I mean, apparently there's scientists and doctors and who knows what else that researched this and, and, um, then come up with a, um, a base, you know, that they say, okay, this is what we found through, through tests and, and whatever, that it shouldn't surpass this because it's potentially dangerous. So cur- currently, they're saying that manganese isn't necessarily dangerous for adults, but it's for children and for pregnant, um, people, women. And, oh, and things that it's used to, so, maybe that's why I can't think anymore.
Yeah, that is true. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that Moun ran into was they changed that health-based standard three or four years ago, and then that triggered them to not meet it, and then they had to send out all these letters to everybody saying their water's unsafe to drink. And I think as we continue to blend our water a little bit more, and we do every year a little bit, but if we get to the point, eventually we're gonna have to send those letters out, and that's kind of like what the mayor is alluding to. If we don't build the plant, people will likely have to send these letters out saying, well, be careful, you know, be, at least know what you're drinking, you know, and, and consider that before you drink it.
Respect the rates, what, are you guys opposed to adding more tiers? You're good with three tiers?
I think that's a good idea to reduce more tiers, yeah, to still kind of focus on that higher usage to try and bring that down. But I think that's gonna have to be a combination of these three.
Yeah, and, and I do like, I like the fee, but let's see, you know, the treatment plant fee, but, um, so here's, here's the thing, what we might get, and I think some questions that might come up is, we have two systems, if you know. It's the northern system and the southern central system. And so what people in the north are gonna say is, well, why should we have to pay for the treatment plant in the south? My answer to that is because the people in the south are paying for your, um, rehabilitation of a water tower, and they pay for, they're paying for your treatment plant, and they're also paying for all of the water infrastructure that we recently did a couple of years ago on Warren View, they're paying for that as well. So it's, it's a whole, it's a system, it's a whole system. It's not like they're just paying for this, it's, it's all, this two point six, whatever, the one point six million, we're still paying for the treatment plant in the north and the other treatment plant in the south, so we're still paying for that. Um, so it's not like we're not, the people in the south aren't paying for the north. It's, we're all paying together for everything. But in case you're asking, you know.
It's just one system, that would be my.
One system, yes. They're not connected, but it is, it is one, one utility.
Take the money, we have the funds allocated separately, so when we do repair on the north side, it's, it's the south people's money, it's in a separate account. At which point, we probably have way more money for the, it's not much, people in the south favor people on the north side.
Yeah, we have, what about five hundred, maybe? No, not even that.
What, in the north?
In the north, like.
Four, five hundred.
Four, five hundred, yeah. And in the south, we have quite.
The other. Seventeen hundred.
All right. Other questions, comments? And so, next question, I have a question, how many people are gonna be at the town hall meeting? Okay, okay, so, um, should we put targets on us? I told Jasper, you guys don't have to worry, probably they'll shoot target out arrows, some bows and arrows, and Jasper and I can sit in the back and wave at us. I don't think we have an opportunity to have this go well, because our sister city, you know, our neighboring city, you know, has.
No names mentioned.
And they've experienced, you know, what it's like to pay a lot, others can't drink. And it's not like we have a choice, we, we, we need, we need this, a necessity. Exactly, um, it's not some luxury, it's not a crazy expenditure, it's something you need, and cost for the cost. Done our due diligence, and really done our due diligence.
Done our due diligence and really done our due diligence. So, um, it's, it's expensive.
Yeah, I guess. Good point. All right. So with that then, um, what's on our agenda for our next work session, do you know?
Can I bring something up? We might be wrong this. I'm sorry. Just so we could, okay, work session, yeah. Can we talk about chickens?
No, no, but we can, so our next work session, do you want to talk about chickens?
Um, so we, we actually have that slated. I sent you an email today, June sixteenth.
That is a long way away.
It is. I can see if I can, I can see if I can move it up. What I need to do is have the community development staff kind of develop what needs to change in our code.
I know exactly what needs to change in our code. It's very simple. Well, not accent, but.
It.
The tiny little change, short code.
Well, if we, so if we, if we permit them, that's a kind of a big step internally, but.
But we're gonna bring it back. I, I was just asking for ideas, what, what's on the agenda?
Yeah, the, the next one, I'm pulling it up right now. I know we have a couple of things on here. Um, uh.
We have a few minutes.
We have a closed session for active litigation. So we're gonna talk about some stuff there. Um, and then I have on here um Code of Conduct review.
That's, I was gonna bring that up.
Potentially.
Just, so I don't know if you've seen in the paper lately, but I know it's um, or in all this is creating a code of conduct and other, and then I checked with other communities that already have. And I thought, you know, since we're good, we're good here, no problems. I'm not saying there are. Um, but it's maybe a good idea to create one before it becomes known. So um, I just, so that'll be um on our agenda or discussion.
I'll agree. Let us talk about chickens before June.
Um, yeah, I got another question. So I'll try to balance them out. May fifth is full. Um.
Well, what else is on the twenty?
Get searched on.
The twenty-first, just those two items.
Can we just be earlier and talk about chickens and get it over?
Yeah.
There's a lot of people with chickens already that are alive, you know. And no one's complaining. I mean, there's a lot of people with chickens. So I just, I, I'm trying to build the people that want them to be like that. We'll talk later about chickens.
We're gonna add that up in the twenty-first.
We have chickens in a row. We're gonna add that on the twenty-first. So, um.
Yes, I'll add that.
And then we'll start and maybe if you think we need to start in five or. So starting in.
No, I don't, I don't think we, we would. I think.
Five thirty?
I think we're still good.
All right. So those will be the items on the twenty-first. All right. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the new work session? Thank you. Uh, yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen. All those favors signify the time. All those opposed, motion castles, we are adjourned until seven o'clock. Thank you. And there's food in the van.
Social media posts about July, that's what it is.
Yeah, well, okay. We'll share them with staff and then we'll share them in the board session.
That's usually the best way.